Welcome, I'm Toby Russell from Committee Services and to open the meeting we just have a quick formality to seek a chair. So, given councillor Garvani's apologies, prior to the start of the meeting councillor Hesselwood was nominated as Chair for the duration of today's meeting, is that agreeable for all members? Right, thank you councillor Hesselwood is formally elected as Chair.
Thank you everybody and welcome to this meeting of the Development Plans Panel. As said, my name is councillor Jules Hesselwood and I am chairing today's meeting. The meeting is being livestreamed on the City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. Can I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves if we can start always from my left?
Good afternoon, Catherine Holloway, I'm team leader in sites and policies strategic planning.
Councillor Paul Ray, councillor Riverside Ward and Chair of South and West Plans Panel.
Councillor Jones, I'm substituting for councillor Garvani and I represent the area of Horstworth.
Councillor Jess Anix, I represent Cross Gates and Winmore and I am the executive board member for Housing and Housing Growth.
Good afternoon councillor Peter Carlisle, carverling Fartherd Ward.
Councillor Barry Anderson, Allen Wolftear Ward.
Afternoon everyone councillor Alan Lamb from Wetherby Ward.
Afternoon everyone councillor Penny Stables from Wetherby Ward.
Good afternoon Toby Russell, Clark to the panel.
Good afternoon, Peppa Pluntree Valley, Principal Legal Officer and Legal Advisor to panel this afternoon.
Good afternoon councillor Colin Campbell.
Good afternoon Debbie Feeney, Chief Planning Officer.
Hello, Martin Elliott, Head of Strategic Planning.
And as previously we mentioned, we do have a workshop following this committee meeting and that should be finished, Martin as I showed us, by 4pm. So we should have both a meeting and the workshop finished by 4pm for members to make their arrangements. So, moving to the agenda, can I ask Toby to run through the first five items please?
Yeah, thank you Chair. So, agenda item number one, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Item number two, there is no items which would require the exclusion of the press and of the public. Item number three, we have no formal late items. Item number four is interest, can I ask members to declare any interest? No, thank you. And agenda number five is apologies. So apologies for absence have been received from councillor Garvani with councillor Jones as a substitute member and I believe we're just waiting for councillor Finnigan, Acton and Prior and I'll note their apologies accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you Toby. So moving to the minutes of the last meeting which was held on the 5th of November, I'm going to take the minutes page by page first of all and then we will, for accuracy, and then we will move to matters arising, okay? So, just get my minutes up. So moving to the first page of the minutes. Everybody happy? Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. And that's the end of the minutes, okay? Is everyone agreed that they are a true correct record of the last meeting? Okay, thank you members. Any matters arising from the minutes? No? Okay, thank you everybody. That was fairly seamless, so we will move on to agenda item seven which is a planning reform update and I will hand over to Martin, thank you.
Thank you Chair. So this paper takes us through two significant updates that came out of the new government in terms of their planning agenda, but also sets out what that wider agenda looks like and the fact that with the introduction of an imminent planning and infrastructure bill, there's more to come in terms of planning reforms this year. But in terms of the document that came out just before Christmas, the National Planning Policy Framework, the NPPF, against which the council's local planning decision-taking and plan-making needs to be in accord, there were a fair few number of revisions to that. Development Plan Panel had seen a paper on that in July last year and a council response had gone out. And the key issues, I'll just take you through the key things that changed. The first is, top of page 12 at paragraph seven, around housing needs and the NPPF changed the way that housing needs were to be assessed. It retained a national standard methodology which it calls a local housing need methodology and that methodology is consistent to add up to a figure of some 370,000 homes for England as a whole being distributed amongst local authorities. Critically for Leeds, the consultation version actually had a figure of 4,159 homes per annum in it, but because of tweaks to the methodology, that figure has now gone down to 3,811 homes per annum. Now that still represents an increase on the current local plan target of 3,247, but it does align with where the previous NPPF was in terms of its local housing need number. And the previous NPPF had established both a local housing need methodology, but it had also added an urban uplift to the 20 most populous cities in the country. This NPPF removes that uplift from the guidance. Looking at that figure of 3,811 which becomes the authority's housing target, against that the council's current five-year housing land supply is 6.6 years, so it is still over five-year supply which is good to the council and that is a relatively healthy position in the short term because that helps the council avoid speculative development because if our housing supply falls below five years, this new NPPF continues previous government's penalties around five-year housing land supply. I note that councillor Lamb wants to just come in on that point.
Just a quick clarification just for the avoidance of doubt, is the 6.6 years based on 3,811?
Yeah. So against the local housing need, we've got a 6.6 year target. The other aspect of the NPPF which has been strengthened is to the government stressing the need for more social rented affordable housing, which is homes for those in the greatest need where the gap between income and housing costs is the highest. That aligns with the council's ambitions as previously expressed in this meeting for its local plan and its local plan update 2042. The other changes are around green belt, whereas previously the NPPF has set that green belt should be altered only in exceptional circumstances and that those exceptional circumstances should come through a plan review. The government, considering that not all land that's designated as green belt is necessarily worthy of protection, has made some changes to national guidance which come in a number of parts. The first is around the expectation that all local authorities will carry out a review of their green belt and what that will do is that will establish whether the green belt, if the local authority is a green belt authority, can meet its housing needs in full. In doing so, it'll look at the green belt and it will distinguish whether there are any areas of that which don't fulfil green belt purposes and the less green belt purposes that are being fulfilled could fall into a category called grey belt. So that's a new category of green belt designation which suggests that it isn't strongly contributing to three out of the five green belt purposes that are set within national guidance. Now, as part of these tests, the government have introduced golden rules for the provision of housing within these areas. So there is first off an indication that the green belt has been an impediment to delivering housing needs and the NPPF looks at ways in which the green belt could be amended so as to help support housing delivery, but in line with its ambitions to increase social and affordable housing, one of the golden rules that the government sets for release of green belt and grey belt is that 50% of housing that is delivered on those sites should be affordable. It also sets out that there should be improved access and new provision for green space and upgraded local infrastructure alongside any releases of that land. Grey belt sites are to be delivered in two ways. The first is through plan making where, and as you know, we're in that place at the moment where we are looking at how to respond to new housing targets within Leeds and therefore in looking at plan making, the council's currently engaged in looking at a green belt assessment and looking at how it defines grey belt. We're currently waiting on further guidance coming out of government to actually, you know, set how that should happen, but the city council's taken an approach as to how to do that and it will run that through its local plan 2042. The second, and this route is one which the council in its consultation response did suggest that it shouldn't happen, but it does and it has happened within the NPPF. The second route is through decision-making which means it can come through planning applications. So developers, particularly where the council does not have a five-year housing land supply, can put forward that they think a site is grey belt and they can justify why that is grey belt and they would have to follow the golden rules should the city council decide to grant that planning permission. The, in terms of unmet need, so if we don't have a five-year housing land supply, there's clearly more potential for us to get speculative grey belt planning applications. That only really applies for housing, it wouldn't apply for other forms of development on grey belt. They could come forward, but unmet need wouldn't necessarily be one of the key material considerations. In terms of the application of the NPPF, it applies from the day in which it was published, which is December 2024, for all DM planning applications and there's a slightly complicated route in terms of how it affects plans in preparation, but for Leeds Local Plan 2042, that plan would need to be made in accordance with this new NPPF. The Leeds Local Plan Update One, which is also in preparation at the moment, the policies within it don't really relate to the changes that have been made in the NPPF because the NPPF changes in this NPPF are really around housing and economic growth, which I'll come to now. So in terms of economic growth, the NPPF isn't only stressing the need for more homes, but also in line with its key missions of the government, is really wanting to set a better framework for economic and industrial growth and revised guidance in the NPPF sets out in particular that we should give regards to the needs of a modern economy, particularly as it relates to things like laboratories, giga factories, data centres, digital infrastructure, freight and logistics. So these things now get quite a prominence within national guidance and clearly they're also going to be factored into Leeds Local Plan 2042 and our evidence base. There's also more significant weight given to all forms of renewables and low carbon projects, including their infrastructure and that also includes the expansion of battery storage systems connected to the national grid. And the government believes that this is important so as to align with its climate goals around renewable energy and the importance of decarbonising the national grid. In terms of other matters, the NPPF has been updated to be more restrictive of hot food takeaway applications. This actually now brings national guidance in line with where our own hot food takeaway SPD is in terms of avoiding higher concentrations near places where children and young people congregate. And the planning policy for traveller sites has also been updated as well. That's been updated to increase the likelihood that Gypsyian traveller pitch applications could be approved within the green belt where a local authority does not have a five-year supply of pitches and the city council currently does not have a five-year supply of pitches and has endeavoured to include further allocations within Leeds Local Plan 2042. So those were the main points in terms of the NPPF. I've also got some points around the English Devolution White Paper and maybe say those and then open for questions, is that okay? Okay, cool. So, members may also have seen the English Devolution White Paper get published at the end of the year. The key thing that that brings in relation to planning and the remit of this board is the introduction of spatial development strategies. Now, spatial development strategies will be created by strategic authorities which the government hopes to introduce across the whole of England, but for us within Leeds, that strategic authority would be the West Yorkshire Combined Authority. So the English Devolution White Paper proposes that the mayor of the WAICA would have strategic, would be obliged to create a spatial development strategy and have those strategic planning powers. The local authority would be party to that and would be engaged in helping prepare that along with the other five West Yorkshire authorities. The intent of the spatial development strategies is to deal at quite a high level with truly strategic and cross-boundary planning issues. So that would include significant infrastructure, it would include sort of river catchments and flood risk, but it would also include things like employment and housing numbers and how they work across a sub-regional geography and whether there are particular calls, for example, for any new towns or strategic reviews of green belt across that strategic geography. The other element of the English Devolution White Paper will be to focus funding particularly as it relates to affordable housing through Homes England within the auspices of that strategic strategy so that the strategic approach to housing delivery and affordable housing delivery and the levers to do that through, currently through Homes England would be brought together more. So that's, there's quite a lot there within the sort of the two documents that were published before Christmas, but there is more to come. There is a planning and infrastructure bill which we are likely to see this year, probably sometime around the spring. There is still an intent to produce national development management policies on issues that the government feel apply in most areas. These were legislated for in the previous government's Leveling Up and Regeneration Act and topics could include things like flood risk, sustainable drainage and an approach to conservation. There's also going to be further consultation on an environmental outcomes report which would be the replacement to the Strategic Environmental Impact Assessment which was governed by European legislation alongside a range of measures to increase build-out rates and look at viability and as well as look at the role of infrastructure and whether a replacement for the current system with a community infrastructure levy, charging schedule and section 106 is, remains the most appropriate to deliver. So that's the majority of what is set out in the report, so I'm quite happy to take questions on that members.
Okay, thank you Martin, really interesting. So we move to questions, I've already got councillor Campbell who has indicated, anybody else have questions? Yep, okay. Right councillor Campbell.
Just to get clear in my mind, so we're effectively saying the new housing target of 3,811 is currently in place, we should remit to that, but it's not really an issue for us because we've got enough land. Right, okay. And I, and it would appear that what you're saying is we're going to have to undertake a review of the green belt because we have to define what's usable green belt and what's we're going to throw into the pot as grey belt. Just a question in relation to the golden rule in relation to affordables in grey belt, okay? So if the government's saying to us, well, if they're saying a minimum of 50%, that will actually become a figure, won't it? It won't be the minimum, it will be the maximum. Does that affect our current policy in relation to affordables outside the grey belt and outside the green belt? I use Otley as an example, theoretically it's 30% in Otley, in the city centre I think it's 8%. Would those still remain or are we actually, are they, are we in danger of developers trying to trade off one against the other? And I've got a second question about the mayor and if you want to answer that one first.
Actually, thanks councillor Campbell for mentioning that because I think I skipped over it, but as I'd moved on, I thought, actually I've moved on, I haven't quite got that right. What the golden rules do is they set a cap of 50% affordables, but within Leeds, it will be 15% more than the local target currently sets. So where we've got 15% targets for affordable housing in generally the south of the city, around the west of the city, if green belt gets released or grey belt gets released, the golden rules would be 15% on top of that, so it would be 30%. In the 35% areas of the city, including Otley, much of the north, much of the east, it would bring that up to 50% because it would be 35% plus 15 and then the council would have the option to set through its plan review what it wanted to achieve in any of those areas. So that's by way of then saying it would be for the council through its local plan 2042 to determine the split and the thresholds at which affordable housing should come forward. So it's going to be a balance between the viability of particular places to support affordable housing and the needs of particular places in terms of affordable housing.
Sitting up at that point, because this strikes me as a minefield. Given the issues we've got in the city centre, for example, which is a good example of even getting 5% and 6%, getting 20% is going to be challenging. That said, I think it'll be challenging in Wetherby and Otley where we're talking about, we now appear to be saying 50%.
In those areas, yes.
If we undertake the review and find grey belt land, presumably if we undertook the green belt review and said, well actually we've got loads of space in the centre of Leeds, it's not, that's out there. I just wonder how we can justify a golden rule that says that when, as we all know, the big pressure is from developers is affordability. How realistic is that?
It's a good question and the fact that in the city centre, we're only able to achieve smaller amounts of affordable housing and in the inner city, we're able to achieve smaller amounts of affordable housing is longstanding and that points to the values that are likely to arise from the completed homes in those areas. So viability is still tough within those areas, but it also relates to the sorts of developers that are engaged in those areas and the viability around volume house builders who tends to operate within the outer areas of the city and like greenfield sites, their viability is probably much more resilient to providing 35% plus 15% or 15% plus 15% depending on which part of Leeds they're going to build in than those developers who are operating within the inner area and the city centre.
Well, I suppose that's the standard comment from most developers in there, but I think we're all concerned, I think, that we really struggle on any development in the outer areas or the inner areas to get our current targets. Effectively, unless there's going to be some backbone from government to help enforce these golden rules, I can't see us ever getting to those sort of figures in my part of the world or in much of the north of the city. I'm interested to know how we're going to get that to work. Can I just ask about the mayor as well? Because I know you're going to go on.
If you ask this question and then we'll have to move on because I've got other members indicating.
Yeah, I understand that. When you talk about the mayor's strategic powers and I can understand the strategic powers around infrastructure, so if we're putting a new railway line in or putting a tram line in, yeah, I understand that, but how would that affect, how would her housing powers affect our ability to set figures and set priorities?
So, a lot needs to hap, this is, this is a proposal at the moment, the Devolution White Paper, so we don't have a lot of the detail, but from what the Devo White Paper is saying, the issue of setting housing targets would be one for the combined authority, the strategic authority to deal with, much in the same way as the regional spatial strategy used to set policy for housing numbers, then the allocation and distribution of those housing numbers would be the responsibility for the local authority. But in a sense, those numbers are already set through the local housing need by national government in any case. So there would, in some circumstances, be a case for a strategic authority to look across its area and understand where some authorities may have more difficulty in delivering the numbers that have been set for it by government than others. In terms of trading those numbers between authorities, that would now be the responsibility of the strategic authority to do that. Does that make more sense?
Sorry to come back, I understand what you're saying, but for example, let's use Leeds as the example. As you say, the new NPPF sets a target for us, doesn't it? And we can hit that target, that's not a problem. What we appear to be saying with the devolution bill is the mayor could say, well, they've got no end of trouble in Kirklees building houses, could you do a few more? Presumably the, well, it would be interesting to know who, whose decision is paramount in that. Do we say, well, just a second, we're doing what we're supposed to do? Or the mayor says, well, that's tough because I want you to do some more.
So all local authorities would have a seat at that table and work with the mayor on such issues, but the casting vote would be with the Secretary of State as advised by the mayor. So if it got to the stage, I mean, at the moment, over the past sort of 20 years, all local authorities across West Yorkshire have wiped their own faces in terms of delivering their own housing needs and there hasn't really been, unlike other parts of the country, a need to meet unmet housing needs across boundaries and meeting unmet housing needs across boundaries was one of the reasons why the duty to cooperate, which was the government's sort of solution to this sort of issue in the absence of regional plans, one of the reasons why that's now not being brought forward and there will be replacements to that, including having these sorts of housing discussions dealt with by the strategic authority.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Stables and then councillor Ray. Oh, sorry, I thought you'd indicated you did. Sorry, councillor Lamb, then councillor Stables and councillor Ray, sorry councillor Lamb.
No, it's okay Chair. So, there's an awful lot to say on this, I'll just focus on the two points we've covered so far and then come back on to, otherwise we're going to be going all over the show here. So, on the green belt stuff, what's the view on commuted sums? Does it say anything about that? Because I'd be looking for an assurance that if green belt is going to be released, we're not going to be in a situation where developers are going to say, it's not viable, we're going to build on this green belt site or we're calling it grey belt, it's not viable, so we'll just give you a commuted sum and we'll put 10% affordables on site. So it's probably as much for the executive member as the officers to give a commitment that we are not going to go down that route, but equally are we comfortable where inspectors are going to be? But equally, are we comfortable where inspectors are going to be on that? That they're not going to overrule us at appeal if we've set that as a firm direction of travel, that the legislation is going to back us up on that? Do we have enough comfort in what we've seen? And then on the mayoral side of things, okay, there's a few issues here. One, we're kind of all looking at it through the lens of the current circumstances with Wyca's makeup, and the current people, and relationships, and the current mayor. It's about thinking about the future, and a different mayor at a different time might decide, right, I want to build a new town in West Yorkshire of ten thousand houses, and it's going to be in Leeds, and it's not a conversation about, could we put some more in your bit? You are putting some more in your bit. Oh, and by the way, I'm going to bring a mayoral precept in to cover the cost of the infrastructure to go with it, because I want to put a tram line straight through it, so the rest of West Yorkshire is going to pay for that. If that was the circumstance, do we take the ten thousand off our number? Or is that over and above what we have to deliver? Is that clear in the legislation?
So I'll come to the easier one first, which is the green belt commuted sums It doesn't say. What it does say is that viability will not be a reason for not delivering the fifty percent affordable housing, or the thirty percent affordable housing. In the consultation, there was quite a lot around if viable, and a rather convoluted mechanism for working that out around benchmark land values. That's all been taken away. So the expectation that government has is that these sites, because they're green belts, they'll currently be in agricultural land, or some other land use, likely agricultural land, it would be for the landowner to take the hit in terms of the land value, so it should be eminently affordable. Now, broadly, that should be the case for a lot of the green belt areas of Leeds, so there should be an expectation that we should be able to see that level of affordable housing being brought forward. And I'm sure that we would insist that that go on site, but that would be something for the plan to consider. I don't see it within the MPPF. In terms of the, what you're asking about the new town, I think, I suppose the things to stress are that the white paper sets out a real importance for local authorities working in partnership with the strategic authorities, in terms of dealing with strategic issues as they arise. There's nothing to say that those plans won't be subject to the same checks and balances that local plans are, they'll be subject to the same planning legal framework, which is around environmental scrutiny, sustainable development, et cetera. So those checks and balances will still apply and have to be worked through. So just because the strategic authority would have a strategic development strategy responsibility, it would still need to be a proper plan, for want of a better, for want of a better phrase, which would need to engage with not only those local authorities, but the constituents within those local authorities as well. In terms of numbers in new towns, I think that would entirely depend on the circumstances at the time. It would more than likely contribute towards that local authority's housing numbers, or it might contribute towards a neighbouring authority's housing number, particularly if it was in a sort of a mass transit corridor, for example. But a lot of that, I think, is to be seen in due course.
Just two quick follow-ups, if I may. So on the, back to the green belt, if we're going to have to do a green belt review, as you know, we have plenty of land which isn't green belt, rural land, for example, which is extremely valuable, and in many ways is as important in its function as the green belt. Are we going to be looking to put some of those things in, as well as having to identify taking things out? Because that's crucial. And the second one, again, back to the mayoral thing, it's a practical effect. If suddenly, I mean, there's going to be an awful lot more mayoral combined authorities, so there's a wider point around this, but if they're all going to start creating planning functions within them, then where's the capacity coming from? If you suddenly need a whole load of more planners, because each of the local authorities are still going to have a planning function to fulfil, plus all the mayoral combined authorities that will now have to fulfil and staff a planning function, where are all these planners coming from, all of a sudden?
So just on the rural land, we are considering that through local Plan 2042, and our current approach to evidencing green belt and value of green belt does include rural land parcels within it. I'm looking at Catherine, yes, it does. Yeah, so it's being done with the same brush in a comprehensive manner. And I think planning capacity and resource is an issue that the government is well aware of. We've seen it expressed in relation to sort of supporting local authorities in terms of their current roles, and I think there's a recognition that lots of this stuff burdens local planning authorities more. But at the moment, other than an indication of, I think, was it just under one planning officer per local authority? I'm not seeing anything coming out of government in terms of SDS capacity and resource.
Okay, apologies, Councillor Lam, I thought you were indicating it was the same question. I will double check next time. Councillor Stables, and then Councillor Ray, thanks.
Thank you. So can I just clarify on that last point? In terms of the green, what I call greenfield site, which isn't actually officially greenbelt, but obviously is considered by certainly local people to be exactly the same, in terms of surrounding our villages and outer areas of Leeds. Are you saying that it would be treated in the same way? Does it have the same protections? So in that, when we are looking, if we're looking for grey belt sites, would we have to apply the same golden rules for those? Is my first question.
So national guidance is only changing in relation to the green belt. So any areas of land that are designated currently as green belt would be subject to these tests and these rules. The city has areas within it that are rural in nature, or green in nature, that aren't greenbelt, they wouldn't be covered. So that would include safeguarded land, which was taken out of the green belt through other plans, and it would include rural land. It's for the city council, so the rural land around Wetherby. It's for the city council through Leeds Local Plan 2042 to come up with a strategy for those types of site. And it would be up to the city council, if it wished, to adopt a similar type of policy in terms of expectations of high affordable coming forward on such sites.
Thank you. So my questions are around the same things, really. So I'll make the point while we're talking about that, in terms of viability, that I'm extremely concerned that we currently aren't able, in the outer areas, it's the same point that Colleen made, we aren't able to get viable developments in, it's very difficult to, in the outer areas currently, to hit what the target is, and therefore, we are, you know, there's one that's going to appeal now in our area, which has been, you know, is stated as not viable in order to provide the affordable housing quota. In fact, they're saying they can't do any affordable housing. So it'll be interesting to see what happens at appeal, and whether the inspector upholds that or not. But I don't feel comfortable currently that the inspector will do, that, you know, and I'm fearful that what actually will happen is that these, the affordable targets will, as were, not being hit, let alone the increased ones. I don't know what, whether that's going to be strengthened in any way, to enable local authorities to prevent that happening, so that, I'll make the point. The other question that I had was going back to the strategic powers of the mayor, and I wondered whether, do we know currently whether across West Yorkshire as a whole, we have a five-year supply of housing? Is that there currently? Because again, I'm equally concerned that what that will look like if we don't, and other areas are struggling too, whether that will come back on us.
So in terms of the viability, viability is very complicated, and it arises for different reasons. So it might not arise simply because the type of land available doesn't meet the use proposed for it, which would be the worry, because that would make this national guidance policy unimplementable within Leeds. I don't believe that to be the case. Viability is often very cyclical, and I think at the moment, we are pretty much at the bottom of viability, given the wide range of macroeconomic impacts upon it. But you would hope that viability would improve throughout a plan period. So we shouldn't be too concerned about the implementability of a change in national guidance simply now, that there'd be expectation that it would be deliverable in somewhere like Leeds throughout a plan period. In terms of the five-year supplies of other local authorities, the five-year supplies may be relevant, but it would really be the local housing needs that are set within those local authorities, and whether there were significant constraints to delivering those within those authorities, that would generate a need to discuss whether there was a likelihood that one authority's need would be placed in another local authority. But, as I say, for quite a long time, those local authorities had them wiping their own faces and delivering their needs within their local authorities without that.
Sorry, just to add to Martin's point, I think the first preference is for local authorities to meet their own needs within their own areas, because you're meeting needs identified through local strategic housing assessments, so you're meeting local needs locally, essentially.
Yep.
Sorry, just to come back on that. So I understand your point that the preference is for local authorities to, but we are saying that there is still that possibility that Wyca could actually then impose additional housing on us, if necessary. There is still that ability for them to do that.
I mean, there are provisions already within national guidance and within legislation that unmet needs from local authorities should be delivered somewhere. So that's been a feature of planning guidance for the last fifteen years. I suppose what this devolution bill suggests is that actually, there would be some more focus to that at a strategic authority level, with a statutory responsibility to sort that out.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ray, and then Councillor Anderson.
I think, just to come on, on the broad conversation that we've had on viability across the piece, I think we're all seeing, all of our planning panels now, this is becoming a major issue, developers hating energy costs, commodity costs. And I think I said this at the last Development Plans Panel, I think we are now starting to gain to the territory where we may need to start to considering what is the most important thing we deliver under our obligations. We'd love everything, but clearly we know, and perhaps officers, maybe it won't comment on this as bluntly as I suppose councillors will do, that actually, if we go to a lot of the inspectors and a lot of these, if we turn them down on viability, we'd get absolutely hammered. And actually, unless government starts to change how viability is looked at, not just at the point of effective occupation of the site, but actually over its reasonable length period, and there clearly appears to be absolutely no interest in doing that on the national level, I think we're going to have to come to terms. And it is a strategic political decision between officers and the political leadership of the council, around about, do we have to now start saying, well, actually, do we want affordables compared to a green space contribution? Do we want affordables compared to an off-site travel plan? Do we want affordables compared to this? And there is a wider political conversation that we need to have as a council about that, because by the looks of it, in the short to medium term, we're not going to get everything we want, and I think we're just going to have to be relative to that. And I don't think the inspector is going to look favourable on this declining things just because we're not happy we didn't get all the Ts and all the Is dotted. So it's more of a comment than anything else.
Thanks for that, Councillor Ray. Just to remind members, I think it's, I think it's this week, that there is a member training session for all Plans Panel members on affordable housing and viability, and that really sort of starts to understand the difficulties that there are within the market at the moment, and, but not just from developers, but different types of developer, including registered providers, and their delivery of affordable housing.
Councillor Anderson.
Quickly, I don't disagree with any of the said, I'm not going to go on to any of those, but maybe we need to look at training for Plans Panel members, so they can understand the logic as to why this is or is not going to happen, and whether or not, the one I keep banging on about is, we're told that everything should be policy compliant. Well, we're now going to be in a position where some of these applications might not be policy compliant, and yet some officers are still going to recommend for other reasons that they're absorbed, so we need to balance that out. But the point I wanted to make, which was more going back a number of years, when Mr. Elliott and I first met on trains going down to and from the Regional Spatial Strategy, and as a result of that, we ended up being able to recruit Mr. Elliott with his extensive knowledge. Is there a problem, because you've got enough problems with recruiting at the moment, that if the combined authority come along and want our best people, they aren't necessarily constrained salary-wise as much as the council is? How are we going to make up? Because we couldn't do without our skilled officers, but if they get offered a better offer elsewhere, because the thing is, there's going to be umpteen other authorities throughout the country wanting the expertise. How are we going to safeguard that? How do we get the quality of officers? I'm not actually to be personal about it, Martin, but I wasn't just blowing smoke at you, but, you know, you did come to us with a high pedigree beforehand, and we don't want to lose people with high pedigrees.
I think, Councillor Anderson, it's, I think it's for a conversation with the combined authority. As the details around the spatial development strategy become clearer, there's still quite a lot to be understood around the type of document that's needed, and the range of skills that will be required. The combined authority already do have some planning people within it, but it's understanding how many and how many are needed, because it won't just be Leeds, it'll be the other West Yorkshire authorities as well, and it'll be all of the strategic authorities. So I do think it's appropriate to have those conversations with the combined authority.
Sorry, Chair, just to come in. I think on that point, Councillor Anderson as well, I think we'd want as far as possible to co-produce any spatial development strategy, you know, rather than it being exclusively a combined authority document. You know, we want to have as much influence at a technical officer level. We don't want our own local plan process to get unraveled or knocked off course, when we've got, you know, focus in terms of what we're wanting to achieve. So clearly, that's going to be an iterative process with the combined authority, and we'd want to influence the strategy. And I would hope that in terms of timing, given that we're ahead of any SDS, and what we're talking about here is just the devolution paper, it's not even advanced beyond that at this stage, we'd want to get ahead of that process. So almost the SDS would be absorbing our strategic priorities within it, rather than the local plan being influenced from a top-down perspective at this point in time. So I think there's some way to go, but we're in a good place, I think, in terms of our own local plan preparation. And I think on your point about recruitment, it has been a challenge, and we've had recruitment challenges with specialisms within the service, you know, biodiversity being one. So there is a massive challenge, I think, facing the industry, so we need to maximise the capacity of what we have, but also through co-production, make the best of those wider resources as well. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Councillor Lennox.
Just wanted to plug the training that Martin mentioned. We've done it with IIIG scrutiny board members, or a similar version of it with IIIG scrutiny board members. And it was in discussions with those scrutiny board members, and with some of our registered provider partners, and with officers, the planning officers and housing delivery officers, and other partners, like Fifty-four North Homes, and other partners around the city. And it was they, it was that collective group of people who said, Plans Panel members should be receiving this training as well, about viability. It's built a lot of, it's built stronger partnerships. built a stronger partnership and a stronger understanding between members and the people delivering affordable housing where we're not doing it across the city. So just a plug for it. And it's online, it's next Wednesday morning. I'm going to, it's actually open to all members. So I'm going to send an email to all members reminding them about it. Because I just think it was, it's been so fruitful to have the chance to go into a bit more of a granular level of understanding about how viability gets from this point to this point to this point. And what, and it's been two way street as well. It's been people from the community of developers and housing associations who are delivering affordable housing where we're not, asking us things as well. And it's been two way. So it has been really, really good. So if you can make it, please do.
Thanks councillor Lennox. I have to admit, I am guilty. I was one of the people who tried to book on the original sessions as a plans person. So thank you for putting that on for 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 members who are on plans panels. It's really, really interesting and essential. I've got councillor Lam again, and then councillor Stables.
Yep, thank you, Chair. So next two points, because there's a lot in this. So we obviously paused Local Plan Update Two for this, to see what it said. What is the practical effect of this now on the plans and timing for Local Plan Update Two in terms of the next steps? And so we haven't published the call for sites yet and so on. And then the second bit we need to get into is traveller sites and what the strategic approach is going to be around the requirements in here and how that compares to what the thinking was in Local Plan Update Two.
Thanks councillor Lam. So the the key, the key reason for pause was that different local housing need. So in the in the consultation version, it was over 4,000. It's now gone down to 3,811. What that enables the council to do is use that as a baseline to say about what does that look like against the new spatial strategy and against a new suite of housing allocations alongside those housing allocations and the housing permissions that we already have in the bank within Leeds. So work has started on updating the SMA, the Strategic Housing Market Assessment, to take account of this new MPPF, because we'll have to do that for it to be compliant with it. And we are seeking to bring consultation to June Executive Board on LLP 2042. So the next two meetings of this, which will be March, certainly the March meeting of Development Plan Panel, we'll be bringing lots of material around Leeds Local Plan 2042 for you to consider. That will include, hopefully in March, an understanding of how we're looking at new needs for gypsies and travellers within the city. We had set gypsy traveller needs as part of our previous plan, which was, which is due to run out in 2028. So we now need to look for a new plan period into the future. And we have been working very closely with Leeds Gate, who were the local charity, to ascertain what the new figure in terms of needs for the city is. And then we'll be looking at how to identify sites, both from a council managed position, but also from a private position as well.
Councillor Stables?
So I just wanted to raise neighbourhood plans. And as where we are, we have a number of neighbourhood plans within our ward, and I'm sure others do as well. So is there any impact? And what is that impact on them?
I don't think the MPPF has any significant changes that necessarily impact on neighbourhood plans, other than neighbourhood plans would have to be in conformity with the national planning policy framework and within the plans that local authorities produce as a result of it. So the makeup still remains the same.
Sorry. So just to clarify then, that presumably means that all of the neighbourhood plans will have to be updated once we've got our local plan updated. Is that correct?
It's it's up to each neighbourhood forum in each neighbourhood area, I think, to determine the important policies that it wishes to promote through its neighbourhood plan. So they could take a view as to whether they feel there is a need to update their neighbourhood plan, because either national guidance isn't clear enough, or there are particular local issues that they wish to put forward that isn't covered by national guidance, or a shift in the local plan, Leeds Local Plan 2042, that warrants further consideration at the neighbourhood level. But there's no obligation on each neighbourhood area to update the plan as a result of this change.
Okay, I don't have any other members on my list wishing to ask questions. Any any further questions before we move on to officers to sum up? No? Okay. Is there anything else officers want to add? Or do you want to summarize the debate that we've had?
Yeah, thanks. As relates to the MPPF, a lot of this will be implemented through Leeds Local Plan. So we'll see the local plan, grapple with some of these issues, the housing number, the green belt, the the great strength provided to, and particular employment sectors. As relates to the devolution bill, as David said, there's still a lot of water to go under the bridge, and there's still a lot of detail to come out. But as David said, because this is a white paper, this wouldn't destabilize the production of the Leeds Local Plan 2042. Neither would, I think, the responsible authority, the combined authority wish that to happen, because we clearly need to have an up to date local plan and able to determine planning applications. There's also a lot of other consultation that's imminent. So we will update Development Plan Panel as that comes out. So I think it'll be a year of of updates to the planning, to the planning system. Thank you.
Councillor Anderson, yep.
If we were to get, because a developer wants to be speculative, at the moment, the residents are relatively well assured that because we've got the five year land supply, it stands little or no chance of being approved. But because the government have now said, well, in effect, we'll let the lawyers argue out amongst themselves, how do we communicate to the public what's in this document today, which is an excellent document? So how do we get this out in the public domain? How do we start explaining to people so that they're aware of the consequences of what's happened to the changes of the MPPF? Because some people have just got used to the MPPF, whether they like it or not is another matter. But this one is going to cause, in some communities, the blockers, let's be, let's be honest, the blockers are going to get pretty upset about this. So how are we going to communicate it and let the public know so that they understand why we are doing certain things nowadays and why we won't necessarily be jumping straight away and saying, no, sorry, no way, that we are going to have to, as we said, compromise on some of our preferences for this, that or the other.
So one of the tests of soundness against the local plan, which remains in this version of the MPPF, is that it needs to be compliant with the MPPF. So every time we talk about a topic within the local plan, we'll be framing that within what national guidance tells us we should be doing. So when we go out to consultation on the local plan, we'll be given a very clear steer to local communities as to what the national guidance is seeking from us. Because we have a, we have a, we have a framework within which we have to operate.
Okay, any further questions from members before we bring this to a close? No? Okay. Right, thank you, everybody. Just agenda item eight, which is to note the date and time of the next Development Plan Panel meeting, which is the 18th of March 2025 at 1:30pm. So if we have no further comments or questions, that concludes today's meeting. And I will declare the meeting closed, and we will have a five minute comfort break before we resume the workshop. Thank you, everybody.